The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good evening. The December 13th, 2022 meeting of the Marion County School Board is now called to order at 5:31 PM. Vice Chair Thrower, will you please read our commitment pledge?
With pleasure. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. I would like to ask members of the audience to please remove your hats and silence your cell phones and electronic devices, or put them on vibrate for the courtesy of others. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of Marion County's school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach-colored form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime-green colored form. These forms must be completed fully and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett, will you please introduce the member of your team who will be introducing those giving us tonight's inspiration pledge?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, great to see you. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Jo Crowder, who is our Fine Arts Coordinator. She's going to come forward to introduce individuals who are going to be doing our inspiration and pledge, and we're honored to have her and her leadership and our students with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And good evening, Board Chair Mrs. Campbell, Vice Chair Mrs. Thrower, Mrs. Conrad, Reverend Cummings, Dr. James, Superintendent Gullett, Mr. Powers, and Mrs. Martinez Lopez. As Dr. Gullett said, I'm Jo Crowder, the Coordinator of Fine Arts, freshly recovering from the Ocala Christmas Parade. Thank you all who were in the float, and thank you for welcoming our award-winning student artists from the Ocala Art Festival sponsored by FAFO, Fine Arts for Ocala. This was in October on the 22nd and 23rd, Saturday and Sunday. Before I introduce our guests and student artists, I'd like to mention we also had student ensembles perform as part of the festival's entertainment on Citizen Circle stage. Those participating schools included Dr. N.H. Jones, 8th Street Elementary, Madison Street Academy, Shade Hill Elementary, Bellevue High School, and Westport High School. And in addition, we have four fine arts teachers that serve on the FAFO board, and we're very proud of them representing us. And now to our guests, I would like to introduce Mrs. Beth Cannon. You can come on up. She refuses to speak. She is the current President of FAFO and also the Student Art Exhibit Coordinator. She's rolling off as President but will continue to do the Student Art Exhibit. The scope of what Mrs. Cannon does is awe-inspiring. She coordinates volunteers, professional artists, student artists, entertainment throughout the festival, food trucks, community booths, judges for both the professional and student art exhibit, and she is just an incredible lady. Thank you for your dedication to our students and community. Our art teachers are also very dedicated. They come on the Friday after school to hang up to 25 pieces of student art, and the art is displayed all day Saturday and Sunday, and their teachers come back on Sunday evening to take everything down. Every participating student receives a ribbon. At the middle and high school levels, there is a sponsor purchase award and ribbons for first through fifth place. At the elementary level, there are seven sponsor purchase awards, and students and parents have the choice to mark their art as not for sale, so no student is surprised when they don't get their art back. All of our award-winning student artists were honored at the Appleton Museum, and we are honored to have them here with us this evening. For our elementary purchase awards, some of our students weren't able to make it tonight, but we do have Daisy Anna Farigno from Maplewood Elementary. Her teacher is Mrs. Jamie Roche, one of our Golden Apple teachers, and her principal is Mrs. DeSanza. We also have, from Legacy Elementary, Sebastian Musoto, and his art teacher is Mrs. Fink, and his principal is Mrs. Murphy. And if there are any other elementary teachers or principals here, please come up. And kids, you can come up here with me, Daisy Anna. And we do have, from high school this evening, we have Mr. Edie, our teacher at Bellevue High School, and I believe Mrs. Heisey might be here too. So, Mr. Edie, you can come up. We have Gloria Sedd, art teacher at North Marion High, and Mrs. Sales, and her student, Troy Brow. Troy, you can come on up. And then from Lake Weir, we have Mr. O'Leary, art teacher, Lake Weir High School, and Mrs. Wade, principal, and they have Matthew Mallory here. And I also saw Mr. Yakalovich and Mr. Rembert from Forest High School. Do you want to bring your art up so they can see? Do you want Mrs. Sedd to go with you?
Sure.
And did I recognize all the students that are here? Come on up here. A couple of them brought their artwork. So, do you want to go, if you go right up to the stage?
We're going to come down and take a picture with them. Okay, they're going to come down. So, you can, yes. That's amazing. But they might want to get it on camera, so yeah, if you'll, they can direct you where you can stand so they can get a good shot of that.
Thank you.
Terrific. Amazing. Absolutely amazing.
So, we'd like you to please rise and join all of these students reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Take two steps forward, and I'll say it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, I'm going to have you guys come stand up here.
Board, while we're standing, let's go ahead and go down and take a picture with the students, and then maybe we can greet them after the fact. Thank you.
Everybody gets to come on up. Do you want the principals? Principals, too, sorry. Behind you, Greg, with Beth.
We're just going to step out a little bit. There we go. All right, one, two, three. Great, thank you.
That's amazing work. We always love participating in the Fine Arts for Ocala Festival. Student art exhibit is my favorite thing to go look at, and my kids love looking at their friends' names and all the art. Thank you so much to all the hard work for our art teachers and the principals, and I know it takes a long time getting the clips hung and all the things they have to do to make sure that display works out really well. And I also want to say a quick shout-out to Jenkins Auto Group, because I think they're still sponsoring that part of the exhibit for FAFO, if I'm not mistaken. So, thank you to all that participated this evening. Just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. And thank you to Ms. Crowder, because I know you work really hard making sure all of our bands are in the Christmas parade this week. Okay, now on to the superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the December 13th, 2022 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items D-24.1, D-24.2, D-24.3, D-24.4, D-24.5, and D-24.6 that have been placed under discussion, and item C-7.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion from Vice Chair Thrower.
Second.
Second from Reverend Cummings. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 1st, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 9th, 2022 Special School Board Meeting, Public Hearings for Final Milages and Budget?
Motion to approve the September 9th meeting minutes.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes 5-0. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 PM. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator or staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensured student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have speakers this evening?
Yes. Ms. Melanie Slaughter?
Melanie Slaughter, S-L-A-U-G-H-T-E-R. Good evening. I am here today to bring to the board a project that I'm starting with the Marion County Youth Football League. I have met with the board of directors. I've got them to agree to have an academic all-star team next year with MCYFL for cheerleaders and football players. I'm going to do certificates for every team. I'd like to, a year from now, be in front of the board with three representatives from the football team and three representatives from the cheerleading squads, representing all the grade levels, before the board to demonstrate that you can have academic excellence as well as athletic excellence in the Marion County Youth Football League. To get us to that point, I would request that the board consider having a representative from the school board at the signups for MCYFL. And what prompted me to request this is my daughter went to Vanguard to sign up for cheerleading, and they announced at the beginning of the meeting that everybody had to have a 2.0 GPA. And the girl with five members of her family in front of us got up and walked out because she had a 1.8 and wasn't going to be able to try out for cheerleading or be involved in cheerleading at all that year. So, I want to head this off before that becomes a problem. That's what we've been doing at Vanguard the last four years, which is why every one of our football players are academically eligible. We have numerous football players on our team this year with over a 3.0 because Coach Farmer set that as the standard for the team, and they will make the grade if you tell them they have to. So, I want to put that out there in March. When they sign up, they've got to have a 2.0, they've got to have what they need to have to be able to play. Well, what if they don't have a 2.0? We have summer school, we have after-school tutoring, we have all these resources available to you, and they will be there at MCYFL to get that information. We can get them on the portal. I'm meeting a client tomorrow that has four kids, has never been on the portal in his life. I'm going to get him on the portal tomorrow at my office and put the app on his phone so he can check his students' grades and attendance and everything else. It's, I know it's frustrating because it shouldn't be that, you have to hand-feed it to them, but if you get them on, then they will be engaged, and they're not going to, quite frankly, come to the schools. I mean, I've been to Vanguard for four years, and we've offered them free food and free everything. Come to Vanguard for our parent engagement night, we'll have five people show up. But everybody will show up at MCYFL signups, because they're all interested in their daughters' cheering and their sons playing football, and they will all be there in droves for days. And if we have something out there and the resources out there for them to know that this is what your child has to do, and if your child is not academically qualified, we will get them there so that they can play, we'll get them involved in the school, and we'll get them involved in their child's education, and we'll get them excited about their child learning. And then I want to have kids here next year so everybody sees that, you know, I asked all the coaches, and a lot of coaches only have two or three kids that are on honor roll, and their comment to me was, they don't play that much. I don't care. I want those kids in front of the school board demonstrating that they can be on honor roll, they can be a participant at MCYFL, they can be a cheerleader, and we are going to honor their academic excellence even if they don't play that much, because that's what we need to be focused on for their future and for them to have a future after football and after cheerleading is over. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slaughter.
Have a good night.
Dr. Gullett, can we connect her with someone from your team, please?
We certainly can, Ms. Slaughter. I think, yes, Ms. Living, Dr. Livinggood's back there. We won't let you get away.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
Daniel King, K-I-N-G, of Donnell, Florida. Welcome, new board members. Got a lot of things going on this next year, a lot of things going on right now for each of you. I've personally spoken of over time, and emails, and attorney, doctor. I want to bring it to the meeting tonight. I know we've got a big meeting on Thursday, a workshop, but a lot of times people can't come to those. I will be there. When I first came to the school board meetings in March of '21, 2021, I wanted to understand the issues, the processes, observe the procedures. I thought that Marion County was vastly superior to most counties in respect to social issues and procedures. I introduced my, I guess you have to have a way of judging what you expect of people, and that's why we have employer sessions and things like that, but I introduced the 1776 pledge to the ones that were here back then. And I didn't really expect everybody to jump on and sign it, although I'd hope they would. For the newcomers, if you want to Google that, and I'm addressing the parents, too. I, as a citizen, I signed that pledge that I would only vote for people, that we're going to teach our children, encourage them to grow in knowledge and truth, and understand that the United States, the America, is a failed nation in so many respects, but we are an exceptional nation, and that's why people are coming in droves and to legally and illegally come into our borders. They want to be here. And we're going to teach our grandchildren and children the truth, and even if we don't like the truth, we can teach them. But that's what the 1776 pledge is. Let's tell the truth, let's learn from the history, not rewrite it, not to get rid of it. And of course, that's what I'm speaking of, is critical race theory and other aspects. We've talked about that, how it's not taught specifically here overtly like in some communities. Unfortunately, what I observed during the pandemic was only one board member, really, in my and other people's opinions, stood for parental rights. And parents, you have to stand up for those rights. You have to come to these meetings. You need to get involved and find out what's really going on. What I discovered is Marion County is also ranked near the bottom of Florida counties. Unfortunately, I know we had a pandemic, and that exasperated the problem with all the areas of, that you could imagine. I've observed a lack of discussion. There was one board member that did try to say, raised the hand and said, we need to have better negotiations. We passed the one mil tax. Again, we've continued that. Unfortunately, scholastically, our county has continued to decline. I set all that up as a backstop of not adding a new department to the school board to take care of. They need, in my opinion, and most people that I talk to on a regular basis, take care of the scholastic issues and leave the security issues to the professionals outside of this organization. And we're going to talk about it, I know, Thursday, but I'm appealing to parents, be there Thursday to make your voices heard. People that may be here that won't be there to hear what my thoughts are, that Billy Woods has a proposed program that will meet and exceed anything in the near term for sure that this board can do. Not that you're not capable, and I'm sure you can, but to add that on top of everything else you're already doing, I share the opinion of others that we do not need another layer of internal Marion County Public Schools Police Department, the sheriff's highest constitutional authority. We need to be a constitutional republic, that we truly are in this county, and they are experts in safety. They meet all the criteria of maintenance, education, all these different things. As I already said, we hope that you're not going to try to, if you do that, to not use any of the money that we've already given you for scholastic abilities. In summary, focus on academic achievement, allow the sheriff to focus on all aspects of safety in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
Mr. Brandon Cave Jr., Senior, excuse me.
Good evening. I had to look around to see if Junior was here. Helping every student succeed is what I've grown to become very familiar with in understanding what the mission of the Marion County Public School System is really about. If that is really the school board's and our school's mission, I think that's an all-inclusive mission. Coming from a law enforcement background, working in the Department of Corrections for over 20 years, retired from there, I've seen young, I've seen old come through the door, having been exposed to various and sundry things in their lives. But I believe firmly that the current Department of Safe Schools' mission states this, and I quote, "To safeguard Marion County Public Schools by implementing strategic security measures, providing invaluable lines of cross-communication and support to our law enforcement community partners while providing a safe learning environment through prevention, intervention, and emergency preparedness planning." It takes a community to do what has to be done in educating our children, but the responsibility for keeping them safe, as it has been being done since the implementation of our current Safe Schools Department, I think our department and you as a board should be commended. Safe Schools Department, I think our department and you as a board should be commended. I strongly disagree with Dr. Gullett's position on how this came about. We hired her to oversee the school board. When the proposal came for consideration, in my personal and professional opinion, I strongly feel that the decision lied with her to take a look at it, to review it, make a decision about it, either nay or yea, not defer it to the school board for them to make that decision for her. We've had many conversations in the community about it, and we do not feel that it is in the best interest of our children, which is over forty-four thousand, and our staff, which amounts to over seven thousand. Let the Sheriff Department handle what the Sheriff Department handles, and let our Safe Schools Department handle what they have been handling since the implementation of this particular aspect of having a safe school. We do not want to see our schools become a pipeline from school to prison, especially when it's going to be a disproportionate, and I repeat that word, a disproportionate representation of people who, black, brown, poor, and other minorities. We heard the sheriff saying, when he gave his first discussion about this, if something arise, happens on a campus, and I'm in charge of the law enforcement part of it, somebody's going to jail. I don't think that every disciplinary thing that happens at a school, I have seven children, seven grandchildren, I'm sorry, who are in school in Marion County. I don't want them to be traumatized by that. Sure, there are a lot of things happening on campuses, but if it's not broken, as the sheriff has said, why do we need to fix it? Thank you.
Thank you, Apostle Cave. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
Cassie Daniels.
Hi, my name is Cassie Daniels, D A N I E L S. I am sure some of you, some of you have gotten my letter. I'm the scorned mother with the bullying that's going on in Liberty Middle School. My daughter is very traumatized. She's not sleeping well, and it was an issue that should have been dealt with, that wasn't, and it definitely was within the school system where it failed. I feel like when parents express concerns, it's not heard there, and I'm angry. My, it went weeks with no callback from the principal, no callback from the assistant principal, until sheriffs knocked on my door at, you know, six-thirty at night, five-thirty at night, I don't know, it was late, and told me my daughter wrote a note during school that she wanted to kill herself. My daughter's eleven years old. She's beautiful, and she's on medication now, just because the school wouldn't listen. And I feel like there should be something set in place where, I don't know, they've, they've got to do something. I should have been notified that my daughter wanted to hurt herself. There was a window there that my daughter could have, and I would have never known. Nobody called me. I didn't, I didn't hear anything. They didn't even do the investigation until afterwards. Like, then this started in the beginning of November. The only person who's reached out to me that's actually cared is Reverend Eric Cummings. He, you know, I'm a parent. I'm sure most of you guys are parents. So, for me, this is something that there needs to be more, I don't know if it's training or better roles set in place, but there's a lot of kids suffering from bullying, and it's sad. It's very sad. So I have to uproot my daughter now. I'm not even sure if we'll really stay in Marion County at this point, but I feel like there should be something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Dr. Gullett, is there someone from your team that could speak with the Daniels?
Um, certainly. Madam Chair, Mr. Frazier is just back there.
Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Daniels, if you see Mr. Frazier.
Coming up right here.
He'll connect with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Ms. Martinez Lopez, that concludes our speakers this evening. Thank you. Thank you to the members of our public who have come and shared with us this evening. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items C seven point one through C twenty-three point one, with the exceptions of items D twenty-four point one, D twenty-four point two, D twenty-four point three, D twenty-four point four, D twenty-four point five, and D twenty-four point six that have been placed under discussion, and item C seven point one that has been pulled and placed under discussion. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower, second by Reverend Cummings. Is there any, there's no discussion on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the grant application? This is item D twenty-four point one. May I have a motion to approve the grant application for Early Childhood Music Education Incentive Pilot Program?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Is there any discussion on this item? With no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the grant application, targeted mathematics grants, and STEM experiential, experiential activities? May I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Item D twenty-four point three. May I have a motion to approve the Turnaround School Supplemental Services Allocation, T S S S A, Plan for Oak Crest Elementary School for School Year Twenty Twenty-two, Twenty Twenty-three? Motion. Motion by Dr. James?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this school is in my district, and Oak Crest Elementary School continues to qualify for increased funding as they continue to improve, and this is a continuation of that allocation. It's extra full-time equivalent money that goes directly to students, and it's to continue the, the good progress that this school has been making. When I first got on the school board, it was in danger of, of being taken over by the state. It had a very poor school grade for many years. So I'm, as a school board member, continue to be very grateful for the support that the state is providing and, and also for the principal, Principal Sandy and, and all of her staff and teachers that are working so hard every day to help each and every student in that school succeed. Obviously, I'm for it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Item D twenty-four point four. May I have a motion to approve the Compensation Amendment Number Two to the Construction Manager Contract, Guaranteed Minimum Price, G M P, for construction of the new central warehouse, Project Two Zero Dash One Zero Two? Motion. Motion by Dr. James?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Item D twenty-four point five. May I have a motion to approve the Phase Three Construction Documents for Construction of the New Central Warehouse, Project Two Zero Dash One Zero Two?
Motion to approve the construction documents for the warehouse?
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower, second by Ms. Conrad. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Item D twenty-four point six. May I have a motion to approve the Transmittal of the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-two, Twenty Twenty-three Education System Impact Fee Recommendation to the Marion County Board of County Commissioners?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings? Second by Ms. Conrad. Is there any discussion?
I do have something.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, this letter is, is required, and at this point, we have our impact fee study in progress and also our capital funding review in progress. So until those are completed, there, we're, we, we don't have a foundation in which to ask for impact fees. So this really is a matter of, of routine and, and part of the process as, as we move forward through it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. That was going to be the exact comment I made on this. As we read, this is continued suspension but not termination of impact fees until such time as we have studies that might dictate as such. So we're certainly, as you noted, required to send a letter like this to the Board of County Commissioners, but at this juncture, until we have the impact fee studies completed, we want to make solid foundation and, and reason for those requests for impact fees potentially. Any other discussion?
Mr. Hurley, he is here if you wanted to hear anything from him.
Okay. Does anybody need to hear anything else on that? Okay. Thank you very much. All in favor on this item, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. This is item C seven point one, pulled for discussion. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment with Renaissance Learning Incorporated for Accelerated Reader Subscription?
So move.
Okay. Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Dr. James, I understand you pulled item C seven point one and wish to have further discussion?
Yes, I really wanted to bring light to how amazing Accelerated Reader is. I know that historically, over the last year or so, this board has had many discussions about line items that may be over a certain price point, and it is not a surprise to me that Accelerated Reader comes with a hefty cost. I, as an educator, a teacher, started using, well, really, I started using Accelerated Reader when I was an elementary student, and it, it, it gave my love for reading. I then became an English teacher who loved using Accelerated Reader in my classroom. And so, for me, I, I used it. I was, my incentive to teach my students to love reading as much as I did. And when I became an administrator, I found out how expensive Accelerated Reader is. And I hadn't known how expensive it was as an educator because I just always had the opportunity to put it in my classroom. And so when I became an administrator, I was actually at a school that couldn't afford Accelerated Reader that year because it, there was no room in the budget for it. And so when I saw this, and I saw that our district was willing to close that gap for some of our schools that don't have the room within their Title One budget or other funds to find the capacity to purchase Accelerated Reader, I was really excited, and I just wanted to speak to how amazing that opportunity is for our students to have Accelerated Reader, and I'm grateful for our district personnel for making that choice and prioritizing reading and literacy in our classrooms because it is a game changer for kids.
Thank you, Dr. James. Is there any further discussion?
I'll pick up from there. Dr. James, in complete agreement, you know, through the years, I have seen Accelerated Reader be a uniter. Accelerated Reader has brought kids and, and families and the schools together. Just the activities embedded with it, they love it. You know, the ones that have it and are using it, it's helping the kids be more successful, and they love it. And that's the kind of anecdotal evidence that I tend to go by when it comes to schools because, you know, something may be research-based, but that doesn't mean it's going to work in a applied setting the same way. You know, I, I like to see the smiles on the kids' faces. I like to see them excited about what they're reading. I like to see them talking about what they're reading. I like to see them talk about what they earn by reading so many books. You know, you put in the work, you get stuff. That kind of makes sense in life. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. For our meeting reminders, the next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on December fifteenth, this Thursday at nine a.m. The purpose of this work session is to discuss Achieve Twenty Twenty-six Goal Three updates, Southwest localized rezoning, the Safe School Agreement, board meeting times, legislative priorities, and board committees. A special administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on January fourth, twenty twenty-three. The purpose of this work session is to discuss policy updates as requested by Niola. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on January fifth, twenty twenty-two. The purpose of the work session is to discuss Achieve Twenty Twenty-six Goal Four updates, the instructional calendar, and student attendance processes. At this time, we'll have committee reports and board comments, starting with Ms. Martinez Lopez. Thank you. I'll go over to Doc, or to Attorney Powers. Got to hop back and forth.
Nothing from Legal.
Nothing from Legal. Dr. Gullett?
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to once again recognize our Golden Apple and School Related Employees of the Year. We had our caravan on Friday, which was a full day. Thank you all for being there and supporting. I just want to recognize our, our incredible dedicated employees that represent not only their teams at their schools and departments, but our entire district. These are the finalists for Teacher of the Year. From Saddlewood Elementary, Cheryl Goldner. From Maplewood Elementary, whom you also saw tonight, Jamie Rochey. Lakewood High School Teacher of the Year finalist was John Gibb. Ocala Springs Elementary School, Lindsay Bigelow. And last but not least, from Bellevue Middle, Nidra Huggins. We also had the opportunity to recognize our rookie Teacher of the Year from Hammett Bowen Elementary, Jennifer Bachmeyer. And last but not least, we had the combined caravan this year, as I mentioned, Golden Apple and School Related. So on our School Related side, School Related Employee of the Year was Erin Weber, who was from Fort McCoy School. And the Above and Beyond Award went to Mark White at Vanguard High. Again, I want to thank all of them on behalf of Marion County Public Schools for all of their great work, and they're all outstanding representatives of, of what we see every day in Marion County. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. We'll come back over here, Dr. James.
Hi, so I wanted to first begin by saying thank you. Thank you to every voter in Marion County who chose to elect this board. I feel blessed to have this opportunity to serve all of you, and I do not take this privilege lightly. Over the last few months, I've met with over forty-five school leaders, over twenty district officials, and countless parents and teachers as I prepared for this position. I listened when they spoke, and I learned what their needs are. I believe wholeheartedly that I am prepared to represent their desires as a board member. While I recognize that I sit in the District Five seat for this board, I also acknowledge that I am one-fifth of a vote for all of Marion County, and it is my duty to know the needs of our entire county, not just District Five. In just the past few weeks, I've been overwhelmed by the positive things I have seen in our schools. From the Parent Engagement Donuts with Grown-Ups at Fort McCoy School that drew a crowd of over three hundred and fifty parents and families at seven fifteen in the morning, to the Golden Apple Caravan, my first ever, where we recognized eight special individuals throughout our district. I have to say, we have some amazing things happening each and every day right here in Marion County Public Schools. I know that in the coming months, this board will be tasked with making some controversial decisions regarding zoning, growth, and school safety, just to name a few. As a board member, I will always make my decisions based on what I believe is best for our students. I will always make my decisions with a student-first mindset, and students will always come first for me, and I believe that the rest of my board members share a similar sentiment. While I know that over the next four years, some of my decisions may not be the most popular, my goal will always be to keep our students in the forefront of my mind, pray over the decisions I'm tasked with making, and do what I believe is best for all of Marion County. I'm committed to supporting healthy growth throughout our district and prioritizing our spending to develop infrastructure that will soften- to develop infrastructure that will soften the growth pain points that are present throughout the district, I will continue to be a fierce advocate for RCT programs and support the expansion of programs to meet all of our students' needs, I fully intend on supporting the initiative to create hub bus stops to facilitate transportation for more students to our school choice programs as schools they may not be zoned for, finally, I intend to model and foster healthy and positive relationships with our school staff to support the recruitment and retention efforts we have already established throughout our district, as a board member, I ask you for patience and understanding as we navigate these fast-moving waters together, I will look to the experts for guidance and make the best decision possible, I believe we have the best possible team, and with Dr. Gullett's guidance, we will walk together as a unified front towards continued success for the years to come, to help every student succeed, again, thank you for this opportunity and I cannot wait to serve all of you.
Thank you Dr. James. Reverend Cummings?
Good evening everyone, Dr. James, welcome to the board, to you and Ms. Conrad.
Right, we're even more awake now.
Okay, welcome to the board and thank you for, Ms. James, Dr. James, for that statement of commitment to the community about your commitment, your passion, the past few weeks, we've gotten to be together in different settings and I share your sentiment too that this board does overwhelmingly feel the same way, tonight, we heard from our community in regards to several different things, I want to thank Ms. Melanie Slaughter because she is one of our community advocates, students advocates, that's always looking to improve it, some people, they come with complaints but they never come with solutions, whenever she's come to this board in the past, she's brought the issues and she's brought a possible solution, so I thank her for always coming and being a partner with this board, I consider her to be a partner with our school district and helping us to look for ways to create better opportunities for our kids and to reach out to those kids that sometimes get left behind or that are marginalized, so I thank Ms. Slaughter, Attorney Slaughter for that, we also heard in our public comment, some disturbing things about kids being bullied and the response by this district, it is always our intent that no kid should be bullied, no child should be bullied, and I encourage our parents to please, don't, don't sit on it, if there's something that's wrong, please reach out, yell to the highest height, because we're talking about our kids and kids sometimes think one thing is the end of the world to them, and we don't want kids hurting themselves, being bullied, taking home that baggage that's not necessary, and we as a district are committed, I believe that the individuals within this district are committed to making sure that our kids are safe as much as they can at home as well as at school, so we want to do our part, so parents, please don't hesitate to reach out, I could tell you, I don't mind you reaching out to me, I don't care what time of the night it is when it's coming about, when it comes to kids and their safety, and that's that mental health component that we have to be willing to talk about and deal with, I said, I said this a few weeks ago in a setting, we, and I heard some community input say it about the pandemic, we went on a pandemic in twenty twenty, March of twenty twenty, and we came back and came back to school, we wanted, we knew that face-to-face instruction was best, we understood that face-to-face instruction helped us to see kids that we hadn't saw, to even have a visual checkup, but the reality of this whole thing is the fact that the kid that left school in March twenty twenty is not the same kid that came back in twenty twenty-one, they came back with different issues, they came back after seeing the world change in front of their faces on TV, they came back differently, and that time away from school has to be addressed in such a way so that we can holistically deal with the kids and the issues that they're going through, we can't expect that they're going to respond to the same things that they responded to prior to March twenty twenty, so I'm committed, and I believe there are others that are committed to understanding that there has to be a strong mental health counseling piece implemented within our district or enhanced within our district so that we can deal with some of the issues that our kids are dealing with, we oftentimes talk about discipline, but it could be that the discipline is a result of us not properly dealing with the enhancement, the mental health component of this, so I know our superintendent is committed to holistically dealing with our children and I believe this district as a whole will do those things necessary so that we won't have parents feeling like the Daniels felt with their child, and we're praying that, because there's many more, the Daniels were brave enough to come forward tonight, but there are many more kids that are dealing with the same situations within our school district, and we as a school district, our principals, our school personnel, cannot just blow it off as something that, this is just something a kid is going through, every kid responds differently, every person responds differently to different things, so we have to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and not pushing the issues to the side, but dealing with the issues as they come forward, I also heard tonight, I'm not going to say anything about this, the two viewpoints we heard about the sheriff's proposal, because we will talk about that on Thursday morning, as I've been getting many, many emails concerning the proposal and my response is that there will be a work session on Thursday, you are welcome to come and give your input, but I did hear something and I, it would be, I would be very remiss to not address this because it's come before us before, about this seventeen seventy-six pledge, and I'm going on the record, so whoever want to record it can record it, they can state it however they want to state it, but I'm big enough, grown enough to repeat everything I'm saying right now, I will not take a seventeen seventy-six pledge, I may, when I got on this board, I took an oath to uphold the Constitution, that's the oath that I'll live by, I won't follow a pledge that was built around seventeen seventy-six, when people who looked like me were not even considered to be citizens of this country, so I cannot, I will not, and please don't ask me again to sign a seventeen seventy-six pledge, because the answer is going to be no, and if they keep asking, they might get another adjective in front of that, no, so I'm encouraging them to understand that this seventeen seventy-six pledge may fit for some people, but it doesn't fit for everybody, and that's my comments for tonight.
Thank you Reverend Cummings, Ms. Conrad?
Yes, good evening, I have, want to say, Dr. James, you did very well, and coming on to the board as a new board member, I do feel confident that your board is here to represent our staff, our students, the people of the community, we are in a concerted effort to work together to make Marion County the best district it can be, secondly, I want to thank, we have district employees that are here religiously every week, sometimes twice a week, here to answer questions for us and concerns that come up in the community, and I just want to thank you all for giving of your time each and every week, especially as a new board member, several of you dealt with me several times this week answering questions, and I really appreciate you and your commitment to helping us make the best decisions we can, that same statement is true, I'd like to thank our community members, I see people in the audience who are here on a regular basis, providing community input to help us make the best decisions that we can, so thank you to our district personnel and for our community members that are here helping guide us as we make these decisions. I was also fortunate enough, as Dr. Gullett mentioned, to be part of the Golden Apple Caravan, it really was a fabulous day, and I know that those eight people represent seven thousand employees that are working and doing their best every day, so I just want to congratulate them on the work that they are doing and the impact that they're having in our schools, also, there's some other really great things going on in our community, I've attended several Christmas programs around our district, Legacy had a program the other night, and Shady Hill also, I was able to attend, and outside of church, it's the best way to get into the Christmas spirit, so I encourage you, if you know about a program, a Christmas program, a school program, I just encourage you to stop by and attend, it really, there's great things going on in our school outside of the academic achievement and the rigorous academic program that they're trying to accomplish each day, I also wanted to thank FAFO, our group that was here for FAFO, it is so much work to set up and gather work and prepare it so that it's hanging and presentable for our community seat to see, and so thank you for that team of people that prepared all of that for the FAFO show, thank you.
Thank you Ms. Conrad, Vice Chair Thrower?
Thank you, the word that just kept popping into my mind as I was listening to each of my board members is grateful, I continue to be so grateful to have the opportunity to serve on the Marion County School Board, and to have the opportunity to serve at this time with these people, and we love to showcase all of the great things that are going on within our district, and there's always way too many to list, I do want to mention Ms. Beth Cannon, I know that she really was not interested in being acknowledged when she was here, but she is stepping down as President of FAFO, and gems like her really deserve to be acknowledged, and she's probably a lot more comfortable with me complimenting her now that she's gone and she'll see it on TV, I guess, but projects like FAFO, Fine Arts for Ocala, are so uniting and they help make our community a community that we can all be proud of, and so I'm very grateful for that, I'm very grateful for Ms. Melanie Slaughter tonight, she continues to come to us every, you know, quarterly I would say, and she always has practical ideas and suggestions, she walks her talk, she gets her hands dirty, and it's all for the benefit of kids, and for many years, especially once I got on the school board and represented Vanguard, I was pretty passionate in the beginning with saying, it could be the best football player in the county, but if, when that football player, if they're fortunate enough to get to a D-one school, the academics are going to hit them harder than any defensive end, and they need to be prepared, and so attendance is super important, those high-level expectations along with high levels of support, not every kid comes from an academically-minded family, so that's where I'm so grateful, again, for our district family that steps in to help fill those gaps, and our community family, people like Melanie Slaughter, that they take it on and they're succeeding, so I'm super excited to, for what's to come with the, hopefully a really good partnership with MCYFL that's going to benefit kids, and also, gosh, the Donellan Christmas Parade, the Bellevue Christmas Parade, the Ocala Christmas Parade, it's just been a great couple of weeks, and so within the challenges that we know that we're always going to have as a board, it's so important to be grateful for the opportunities that being a board member provides, and it doesn't sugarcoat the fact that we have challenges, everyone knows that we have challenges, all schools have challenges, and I think this board has been pretty direct about that, I know our Chair made a plea to the community, you know, months ago, "Community, we need your help when it comes to attendance, we need your help when it comes to reducing bullying, it starts for us with a partnership with you, and then it starts at the bus stop, kids need to ride the bus with the same mindset as they have when they sit in a class that they actually want to be sitting in, they need to show the same behavior in a class that they would rather not be sitting in, it's those very high expectations combined with those very high levels of support that are going to make the difference, and I know we're moving in that direction, I could not be more thrilled because the data really points to a lot of difficulty right now with our middle school kids, they do not need cellphone bullies riding around in their pockets all day long, visible, and then reading everything that may, that goes on in that world, and again, parents, this is where we really need your help, please, be aware of what your kids are doing on social media, it's devastating, and kids are very smart, they know all the workarounds, you think you have that cellphone locked down, you think that you have all those parental controls in there and they're busy coming up with apps that mimic other apps, so you won't even know that the apps that are so dangerous are even on your kid's phone, so my heart goes out to you parents, you know, my kids have graduated a few years ago and this issue continues to become more and more problematic, and someone on, actually, this is a good example of social media, it was a parent that always makes her opinion known, but she said something that I was, again, so grateful for the other night, she said, you know, "We have to work together as a team in order to make things the best they can possibly be in our district and in our community, and as far as I'm concerned and from where I'm sitting, it's getting to be very near time to make a decision, who do we want to be as a community, and how are we going to support our children, and how are we going to support our parents in the monumental task they have in today's times to help their kids not only just be everything they can be, but to survive what's being thrown at them from way too young of an age, so I'm grateful for the opportunity to have shared all this with you tonight, it's been on my heart, and it makes me grateful that we are here in some very challenging times and I have the opportunity to help really make a difference, I hope all of you feel the same, thank you."
Thank you Ms. Thrower, as you were alluding to and giving us a preview of what your word was going to be, I just kept thinking the word grateful, so you and I are on the same page on the word grateful right there, I also want to second Reverend Cummings and Ms. Thrower's welcoming of our two new board members, this really is, I'm grateful to have the opportunity not only to serve as Chair this year, but also to be serving as Chair with a new board, and it's, these truly are exciting times ahead, and frankly, today, I couldn't have started my day any better than in Mrs. Camillo's first grade class at Eighth Street Elementary as they were having their readers theater and they sang to us and they had their flashing lights on and it was, it was so great and so many parents were participating and it was just a wonderful opportunity and I'll be visiting another school the end of this week, send those invites our way, I mean, anytime schools invite us, we love it, I know, speaking for me, sometimes the opportunity doesn't necessarily fit in my calendar, but oftentimes principals even work with me to be like, "Oh, well, you can't come to the evening ones, well, here's a daytime one that might work," so I love those opportunities and, like I said, today, Mrs. Camillo, thank you again for that request that you gave to me to be there, it really was worth it for sure, also, as was mentioned, thanks to Mrs. Slaughter for being here and sharing her thoughts, I've often had visions of how we might be able to partner better with MCYFL and I think she may have a really good idea that we might actually be able to come to fruition, and the great thing that I know about Mrs. Slaughter is I also will always know how old her kids are in school because her three children are all, they're freshmen in high school and I have a freshman in high school and they were all in school together and they're going to continue to, so I'll always know how old her kids are, so hopefully she continues to be involved even after those children graduate, but at this point, we have her at least for a couple more years, I also wanted to say a special thank you to Florida Express for sponsoring the Ocala Christmas Parade float for us, they've done that many years, we had a wonderful driver who got us through the parade and it was just a great time, so kudos to them again, we also had the Golden Apple Caravan that's already been talked about quite a bit, and Little Birdie told me that we might actually be able, or might be considering adding the Principal and the Assistant Principal of the Year to that full-day caravan in the future, I think that would be a great suggestion, that's not mine, someone else might be making that suggestion, but I think that would be wonderful for us to be able to recognize all of these rock star employees all at one time with a huge group of people and just walk in with a huge group of people and just walk in on them and make them all excited because it really is a great, great opportunity. Because we have some amazing things happening in this district, as Dr. James said. Now let me get to a little bit of business. I wanted to remind the board that any board comments that you made this evening, if you do want them included in the minutes, they should be typed and sent to Ms. Elena Martinez Lopez immediately following this meeting. That will just help her in collecting that information. I also have a little bit of housekeeping. So we will be talking about board committees on Thursday. I know that we taught, I have the, the papers again where we can hand fill these out. Just wanted to make you aware that right now, the ones I have actually are all blank. So that's, we're, we're going to have to fill these back in because some of them I, I can't quite remember. I did confirm that the Community Council Against Substance Abuse would love to have a board member represented there. And we also have added since our last meeting, the Fort King Heritage Foundation is interested in having a member. And then we're also wanting to appoint a board member to a veterans group. And Dr. Gullett is working on determining exactly which one that will be. So I can either pass these out now or we can pass them out on Thursday. If you want to see the list again, it's the board's purview. It's their, okay, you can take them now? Yes, sir.
There was, we did get clarification about the Public Education Foundation. So according to their bylaws, it has to be the chair or the vice chair.
Thank you for that, Reverend Cummings. Yes, I, I meant, it's listed here and I meant to mention that. But yes, the Public Education Foundation bylaws actually say that the seat that they have on their board for a board member is the chair or the vice chair. And we thought it had said the chair or a designee. And anyway, we got that clarified. So I'll, I'll be happy to serve in that role with the Public Education Foundation. And we can just discuss this more on Thursday, but I wanted you all to have that tonight. So you can think about it and we can talk about it whenever that comes up. Another thing that I have for us is April from Florida School Board Association. After she did such a great training for us for our first master board session, she sent an email to me asking about calendar dates for February, March, and April. So board, if you want to do that now, we can pull out our calendars and try to figure that out, or we can do that on Thursday. Either way, I just, up to the board's purview. Do you want to pull out our calendars right now or do you want to look? Okay, let's do that.
I thought there was another date prior to February.
We have a January date already on and I think it's January 5th that we're doing that. But she asked to go ahead and schedule the February, March, and April. So that way we'll have every, I think that will wrap up all of our trainings at that point.
Have you notified?
I, I wasn't notified of a date.
The January 5th date?
Correct. No one notified me of the date.
That, that's, that's the end, at the end of the work session. So Dr. Gullett is aware of that, that it was going to be, we're having a half day work session, I believe, and we were going to do a date, a time certain on that? That was the conversation we had on Friday?
Madam Chair, that's correct. I'm just waiting for confirmation of time so that we can do proper notification. I haven't received anything from them yet, but.
Okay.
We have, I have notes about it, but we're just waiting for confirmation from them of time.
Okay.
I was going to ask about that question because I know that if that's going to be a, we need to notify and notice it if we're meeting for that, correct?
Yes.
We have a proper time to notify.
Stop at noon, like have our work session from nine to 12 with a time certain and then go into master board at one, one to five.
Or 12:30 to 4:30.
Or 12:30 to 4:30.
There has to be a separate notification for the master board training.
Right, right.
I have to do it by Friday because we won't be here by the 29th. In order to do it seven days prior, so I would have to send out the notification on Friday. So I would just need confirmation that, yes, we are doing the master board training and the time and the place.
Okay. So we can work with April, I guess. I, I thought that that was already worked out when she sent me this email. So we can get that worked out with her. I, it does, is that what you all were understanding that we were going to do the afternoon master board training on?
I did.
January?
Yeah, we did. I just want to make sure that it was properly noticed.
That presumes that, 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 that day, the work session is a Neola session. So.
January 5th? No, January 4th is a Neola session.
Okay, gotcha.
January 4th is Neola. January 5th is already a scheduled work session.
Right, thank you.
Did I?
And Madam Chair, yes. And, and what we didn't have a chance to talk about that day, as you may recall, is that we have already three topics. So we'll have to make sure that if the board wants to proceed, that we finish by noon. Or we may have to move a topic because right now we have Gulf War updates. We're going to have recommendations on the instructional calendar for the 23, 24 school year from the committee and student attendance processes. I can tell you from those topics that that may not conclude by noon. So if we want to proceed with that finishing at noon, we just need to have confirmation from the board of that.
So would that mean, I'm sorry, would, Madam Chair, would that means you have to move, you said, I only heard two topics. Is there three topics?
We have, we have achieved 2026 Gulf War updates. We have the recommendation from the instructional calendar from the committee. And we have the student attendance processes. That's been previously discussed at work sessions.
Vice Chair Thoreau.
I would say that the instructional calendar recommendation, is that Mr. Ayers is going to be?
That's correct.
On that item. He's to the point. So I, I don't foresee that as being an extended conversation necessarily. There's probably going to be some questions, but I don't see it as being a protracted thing. Maybe we, to cover ourselves, we really would need to plan to meet at, until 12:30 and then start with master board at, at one.
I'm fine with that.
So we would do our work session from nine to 12:30, time certain. And then master board training would begin at one.
We're having it here, location here?
I don't know that we asked the CEP about using the bell.
That's something that, if, can someone let you know tomorrow, the location?
No later than Friday morning. That has to go in Friday morning.
Understood. Dr. Gullett, we can coordinate.
We, we can coordinate and follow up.
Okay. Okay, so that has us set for January 5th. February, we probably need to give them a couple of dates, perhaps.
As far as, Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
As far as February is concerned, Dr. Gullett, would it be more expedient to get some time to look at your calendar and maybe propose some, some dates? Because it's hard for us to know exactly what you all have going on too. There's a lot of moving parts. I'm thrilled that we have January's dates.
I would agree. I think Dr. Gullett should bring some dates to the board maybe and then we can try and find consensus.
Perfect. So if we could maybe get that, it maybe in, potentially in your comments on Thursday, Dr. Gullett, if we could
Certainly.
Pull out calendars and check then?
Well, let me go ahead and tell you, I can tell you when I can't do it in February. I definitely cannot do it anytime between the 9th and the 13th.
I think we're at the FSBA Finance Forum that, that, that date as well. So Ms. Conrad and myself won't be here either for that.
So we can go ahead and block out that time for anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could you confirm how many dates you would like then to be proposed? I mean, we need three more days. Is that correct?
We need a date in February, a date in March, and a date in April.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then March has spring break.
I know Wednesdays usually work best for me, but I don't know if when, like if we had, are, are Wednesdays typically a good day unless it's? And I'm just, as Dr. Gullett's checking her calendar, we say like Mondays and Wednesdays, check those days and see. So then, okay. All right, perfect. So we'll have more information on Thursday. Again, just trying to get some housekeeping items out of the way. The last thing that I wanted to bring forth potentially, board, is a question that I haven't spoken with you all about because obviously we can't talk about this until we're in a, a meeting like this. But during the Florida School Board Association Conference on the student panel, you all may have remembered the student panel that was representative of many Florida's student councils. And one of the members noted that she was her student representative on her school board. And so that led to more and more questions. And so I actually have reached out to Bay County to learn what their policy is. I know that Martin County has a policy that I have found and actually sent it to Attorney Powers. First of all, I wanted to kind of gauge the interest of the board before we pursue even talking about this further. I, I believe Sarasota does as well and maybe Palm Beach. But the only policy I've actually seen so far is from Martin County. So I didn't know, I, I think it would be an interesting idea to actually have a student represented and maybe we have a different student every meeting. Or maybe we have one, I think Martin County actually has one chosen at the beginning of the year that represents students on their board as a non-voting member, member throughout the entire year. Obviously, we, we can't do that right now. But while we're doing policy and rulemaking, if that's something that the board would be interested in doing, perhaps we can talk through that as new policy if you think that would work. And we can certainly work out the parameters on what that would look like, if it would be a rotating. I think Martin only, I think they only have three high schools. So they're a little smaller than us. And so I think each year, a high school has the representative and they rotate that. But again, it's just a, a thought, an idea. But to actually have a student sitting here, essentially beside Attorney Powers as a non-voting member of this board, I wanted to see how you felt about that suggestion.
I love it.
Yeah, I love it too.
I love the concept. And, and I, I think that I would love it even more if, if it wasn't just one student from one high school for the whole year because our high schools are just so different. So it'd be great to get their views to the table, you know, within that same year. But I, I love the idea. I think we, I feel like many years ago, we may have done that here. But I don't know. People that have been here longer than me might be able to let me know that. I feel like I do remember at least one time a student sitting up at the dais. So.
Reverend Cummings, Dr. James?
Yeah, I love the idea. I'd love to learn more.
Reverend Cummings, we have consensus to move forward with that suggestion?
I'd like to, a little, a little bit more. Because we are such a large county, large county, a diverse county, I just would want to make sure that how, how it would be done. But I don't have any issue with exploring the idea.
Okay, terrific. So Attorney Powers and potentially I can work on finding all the different policies out there of the different boards that have such a, a student representative and certainly we can craft our own. The one I've already sent him from Martin County, I, I think we possibly obviously want to shift away from that because that is just one representative every year. I don't know if it would be members from the student government associations since they're already kind of running through, I don't know. We, we'll have to work on the parameters. Attorney Powers?
Well, Martin County actually has three high schools. And as a result, what they do is they have, they rotate among the high schools. And then it's, the, the student is elected by their student government to that role. And then they serve for the entire year. Now, we certainly could do it in a way that allows for there to be quarterly or, you know, six months changes or whatever it might be so that we have more students reflected. But I think that those two core elements of number one, appointment or election by their own student government is a good idea. And also the rotation among various schools. But there's a lot of different variables that we can, we can factor in to, to make it unique and something that fits our needs.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Maybe then after the two of you get together, you could present to us some, some options based on what other schools are doing and also, or districts are doing and also what might look good, you know, for our district and how we operate and who we are.
Very good. Okay, wonderful. So we will work on that and maybe in the next couple of weeks have something that we can bring forth. Perfect. Just wanted to talk to you all about that again. Not something we could talk about because it is going to require us to make a decision and potentially policy. And with that, that concludes my comments. Yes, sir.
This was mentioned about these, a few weeks ago, about the Christmas parade in McIntosh?
Oh, yes, December.
This Saturday.
This Saturday.
Is that something we're trying to participate in?
I know personally, it's going to be a stretch for me to make it there. I have two other commitments that day, this Saturday.
Right. And I think I have a commitment as well.
It will be a stretch for me also.
I would like to forward plan for next year regardless to be a part of all, all four. And if any other community has a parade that, that we could participate in, I do want to seek representation in all of the parades as a matter of our, our operating procedures going forward.
Agreed, Dr. James. Thank you for that because I think this was at least the first time in many years that the school board has participated in the Dunellen Christmas Parade and participated in the Bellevue Christmas Parade. We've always been in the Ocala Parade, but the other two, and then with the opportunity, I didn't even know there was a McIntosh Parade. So I, I think that at least the three of us certainly might not be able to attend on Saturday. So it might be a little bit of a stretch for us to, to get there this time. But if we can forward plan that and know those dates for 2023, go ahead and get, if they're already scheduled, to go ahead and get those dates on our calendars so we know when they are. Thank you for that, Reverend Cummings. You're right about that. So.
Yes, Vice Chair. Yes, and, and Marion Oaks is coming up. So I.
Oh, they have a parade too?
We might be hearing something about a parade in Marion Oaks one of these days before too long. Not planting any seeds in their head.
I know. I'm like, who else has a parade?
And while we're, while I'm thinking about it, because I know we're going to get ready to go on Christmas break, we also have coming right back into the new year, the MLK march.
Yes.
That we normally all would.
Yes, that's right. I just got a, an envelope with all the, the whole schedule and everything with that.
Yes, check your mailboxes, board. We do have information about the MLK activities, all of the different activities that they have, the, the prayer breakfast, the.
The march.
The whole weekend, the wreath laying.
The real physical mailbox in the room at the end of the hall. Yes, I was just in there yesterday and got that notice. So thank you for bringing that up, Reverend Cummings, because that will be upon us before we realize it. And if you haven't, if you don't check your mailbox this week, then you might not be on campus much for a couple of weeks. So thank you for that reminder, Reverend Cummings.
Tomorrow, or lunch on Thursday, something we need to talk through because it's likely going to be a pretty extended work session. So I just want to, wanted to propose that everybody bring your own lunch, whatever you like. There's probably a refrigerator somewhere that we could put anything that needs to be refrigerated and we'll break at a time that the chair feels is appropriate.
Okay, we had originally talked about having MTI, but I, I believe that they, Chef Niles already shut, had to close the, the cafe for the season. So I'm fine with bringing our own lunches. Everybody not in agreement on Thursday?
I had a conversation this morning about Chef Niles preparing. I'm just waiting for clearance.
Okay.
From us.
We need clarification on that then.
We do. We can coordinate if you'd like. Just let us know. We just have to find out from him for sure.
Okay.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
If they, if MTI wants to do it, I, I don't think there's going to be anyone sitting here that is not thrilled with that opportunity. But it's also getting ready to go on break and I know there's cleaning that has to be done and all of that. So if it's not a burden or a hardship, shoot, I'll take it.
I would eat Chef Niles cooking any day.
Exactly, especially over mine.
Okay. So, Dr. Gullett?
We will let you know. Thank you.
Terrific.
Ms. Martinez Lopez has been working on it. Thank you.
Wonderful. So we have at least another day in between that we can coordinate all of that. But yes, we are anticipating that Thursday will be a very full work session that we might want to have a 30-minute break to, to grab a bite to eat in the midst of.
Chair, let me add two.
Yes, sir.
Can you just also tell us the price? Because I don't want the public to think we're just trying to get a free meal.
Yeah, no, we'll be paying for our own meals. Thank you.
Never even crossed my mind, but yes.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
We, we live in some different times. So some of the emails I see. Thank you.
Host tip.
Yes, the intention is that we would purchase our own meals or bring our own meals. And so we, yes, thank you for that. Okay, does that conclude all of our housekeeping matters for this evening? There was a lot. There were, there are a lot of things. Again, for the public, we are only able to talk about matters like this when we all see each other together in the public. So sometimes it sounds like we're just having conversation, but in actuality, we have to have those conversations in the public. So with that, I do want to wish everyone Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and Happy New Year because all of those things, from a board meeting perspective, we will see each other on Thursday for our work session. But from an actual board meeting where we're, we're conducting the business of the board from a vote perspective, this is our last board meeting of 2022. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year to everyone. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through November 8th, 2022. Mrs. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matters?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD 23-0039, JD 23-0041, JD 23-0042, May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD 23-0039, JD 23-0041, JD 23-0042, JD 22-004E, JD 23-0045, JD 23-0046E, JD 23-0047, JD 23-0048, JD 23-0050, JD 23-0053, JD 23-0054, JD 23-0055, JD 23-0056E, JD 23-0060, JD 23-0062E, and JD 23-0063E with educational services through the remainder of the 2022, 2023 school year.
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Skips.
My apologies. On the script, it says for the remainder of the 2022, 2023 school year, but it is also the first semester of the 2023, 2024 school year.
Thank you.
So please word that.
Okay. Let the record show that the motion needs to include all of those student numbers with educational services through the remainder of the 2022, 2023 school year and the first semester of the 2023, 2024 school year.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Dr. James.
I think we had a motion by, or member Cummings, said we need a second.
Okay. So Reverend Cummings, are you amending the motion to include the first semester of the 2023, 2024 school year?
Yes, I amend the motion to read expulsion with educational service for the remainder of 2022, 2023 school year and the first semester of the 2023, 2024 school year.
Thank you.
And I second that.
Okay.
Amendment.
Okay. Motion by Reverend Cummings, second by Vice Chair Thrower on that specific original motion now amended. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I just wanted to thank, if I may.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, thank Mr. Fraser for, uh, he helped organize that information. It was a lot of information to take in as a new board member and I appreciate you taking the time to organize it so it was easy to understand and assimilate. Thank you very much.
Yes, I agree, Ms. Conrad.